All righty, good evening and sorry about the delay. At this point, we will maintain the study session open for the end of, as soon as we end the city council, then we'll go in session and finish up the business that we have for the study session. All right, so at this point, I want to first of all say good evening. I'd like to open up the Baldwin Park City Council Regular Meeting. Today's February the 7th, 2018. The time is 7:10. Also, I'd like to open up the Baldwin Park Charitable Committee with that as well. So, at this point, we're going to go and have, I'm not certain Pastor Jackson is present? Oh, yeah, oh, okay. Our chaplain will come up here and do the invocation by also Dr. Flores as well, so we'll have both of them come up. Following that, then we'll go over to the actual flag as well. Hey Manny.
Heavenly Father, we come before you right now in the name of the Lord, giving you praise, glory, and honor and thanksgiving. You said acknowledge you in all of our ways and you would direct our path, and Baldwin Park needs your divine direction, Lord. We asking you put in your hand upon the mayor and the city council and all those that work to make the city great. Touch our school district, Lord God. We have a thing that's going by, maybe many people like it and some don't. I don't, but that's my opinion, is marijuana. It's a gateway, and I know that, touch our young people, Lord, that their minds will not be distorted by the freedom of using marijuana. Touch our military, Lord, we're in some perilous times right now, Lord, and we don't know what's going to happen from one day to the next day, but we asking for your mighty hand upon us. We asking you to touch our police department, our fire department. We asking you, Lord God, to prosper our businesses, Lord God, that they may be able to prosper here in Baldwin Park. Touch the gangs and break the power of that thing, Father. In the name of the Lord, we pray. Amen.
Thank you very much.
Lord, thank you for today. Lord, we join in with Pastor Jackson and the rest of the city. Lord, we thank you for our servants, our public servants who serve on our behalf. Lord, we just thank you for their diligence, Lord, and desire to want to honor the city, Lord. We thank you for our citizens, Lord, and we pray, God, that you help us all to bring honor to our city, dignity, and worth to everyone that's part of our city. But we are mindful of those who've experienced loss of life, Lord, and their families today, Lord, and those that mourn, Lord, that they would be comforted in their mourning, Lord. Help us to continue to move forward, Lord, and be able to seek the welfare of the city. In the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you. At this point, we'll face the flag. Place your right hand over your.
......................................................
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. I want to thank all the individuals that are here this evening at the city council meeting. So, at this point, I will go over to Maria Contreras and we'll conduct roll call.
Good evening, everyone. Buenas noches a todos y bienvenidos. Councilmember Cruz Baca?
Here.
Councilmember Monica Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Susan Rubio?
Present.
Mayor President Ricardo Pacheco?
Present.
Mayor Manuel Lozano?
Present. All right, thank you very much. At this point, I'd like to make a motion to excuse Alejandra Avila. That is my motion, our city treasurer. Second, any objections, see you on so move. Councilmembers wishing to close on anyone's behalf?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, councilmember.
I'd like to close. I don't know if you heard on the news, a dear friend of mine, N'Dugu Chancellor, that was a drummer that worked with many great groups from Michael Jackson to Tony Bennett. He was also head of the drum department at USC later part of his years. He passed away a few days ago. He will be missed. Incredible legend he's left behind. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That will be noted. Any councilmembers?
Yes.
Councilmember Susan Rubio.
I'm not sure if you did this, Councilmember Cruz Baca, but I want to close on behalf of Anita Lazer, who just recently passed. She was a long member of the women's club. For many years, I've known her, and just recently she passed, so in her name, I'd like to send Anita Lazer. Do you remember?
Yes.
She used to be an entertainer?
Yes.
A lady?
Yes.
Anyhow, let's send her our condolences. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember.
And Mayor, I-
Yes, Councilmember.
Councilmember Rubio reminded me, there's also another member of the women's club that passed away yesterday, Eleanor Flowers, who had also been ill for a while, another member for a long time. So, our condolences go out to her family and prayers, of course.
Mayor?
Thank you. Yes, yes.
I just would like to welcome our new-
Oh, that's right.
... Inora? Or you could go ahead.
Yeah, Darrell Bentecourt is our currently deputy city clerk, so thank you very much for being with us, Darrell, as well.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Also, I want to thank and recognize Marie Contreras, who's been off. Of course, she's had some eye surgery and she came in here-
I could see with both eyes.
And she was, she says, "I could see your scalp." Thank you very much. A lot more clear. Very good. All right, anyone else wishing to close or say anything else? Okay, if not, at this point-
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Monica Garcia?
I just want to mention that this morning, we had the grand opening for Jersey Mike's.
Oh, that's right.
And it was great that the council was there to support along with the business association. Just want to thank our staff once again for working on that project and for helping us, you know, get that going, and it's going to be a great amenity here for our community. So, really excited about that.
All right. Thank you very much, and thank you for that recognition. At this point, we'll go over to the presentation. We have the first one, which is a warehouse CUP zoning presentation by Community Development Director. So, at this point, Mr. Gus Romo?
Yes, sir. We'll go ahead and just set up the slide presentation. We just have a brief PowerPoint. Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, the reason we bring this up to you, when I started here, there was a gentleman that had brought up an issue to me regarding the city's current ordinance pertaining to warehouses and their permitted status or non-permitted status within the city of Baldwin Park. And as I researched this issue, I found out that the city does not allow warehouses, regardless of the size, within any of the commercial zones except for one, the I Industrial Zone. You can go on to the next slide. Oh, that's it. Thank you. So, if you look at the commercial industrial zones matrix of uses, you'll see that under warehouses, you have a dash in all the zones except for the I-zone. And in the I-zone, you're required to do a conditional use permit, which is a discretionary land use entitlement, has to have planning commission approval. Regardless of the size of your warehouse, you could have a 1,500 square foot of warehouse and still be required a CUP. As planners, we know that warehouses are not intense uses. They're storage uses. I believe, as I was looking through this, that the intent of the code is really to keep away more large distribution-type facilities, large warehouse uses that do create traffic, air quality impacts, and at that point, that could be conditional use permit reason. The other thing, when you look at the non-conforming section of the code entitled "Abandon Change or Increase in Use," this section identifies when a legal non-conforming use loses that non-conforming status. So, what happens with the small industrial parks, if you have warehouse use that's been vacant for more than six months, all of a sudden, if you're not in the I-zone, you're in any of the other zones, you can't do that use anymore. You've got to convert it to something else. Or, if you change the use, of course, you have to change it to something that's permitted. So, one of the business owners here in the city has indicated to us that that's become a bit of a problem for them because they do have tenants that they'd like to put into their small warehouses, and now they're have to, been told that they cannot do that anymore, that they're not available for warehouse uses. Or, if they are in the I-zone, that they have to get a conditional use permit, which again, there is a fee, a process, public hearing that you go through. It's the opinion of myself that this intent of the CUP, again, was to address the impacts associated with the larger distribution-type uses, like you see here, and not the smaller warehouses uses, which we believe is onerous and unfriendly to business. So, what we'd like to do is get your direction on whether it was the intent to do this CUP for the small warehouse types, or if this is something that you'd like staff to look further into and bring forward a code amendment with various thresholds for these uses. And I know there is a gentleman here in the public that is, wrote us a letter by the name of Mr. Dean Simpson. He might have some things to say as well. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Cruz Baca.
Could we give direction to community development as well as probably, Amy Harbin will probably be involved in this? Hi, Amy, I see you over there. So that they can look into this and see, you know, how, if we have an existing business, how come they can't open it again, in a sense? So, I mean, we're a business-friendly city, and I would really like to see if we can look into this further and see what we can do in order to try to accommodate this business.
Absolutely.
I would like a little bit further. Can we look into, right now, to see how many businesses are impacted by this? I know you kind of gave us the general, but a study that includes the current existing businesses and the ones that are being impacted that can't open unless they get the CUP. Thank you.
Certainly, ma'am.
All right. Okay, so at this point, are we having, are we having them come up here? Is that what we're doing? Well, we're waiting for public communication. So, at this point, are we finished with your report?
Yes, sir.
Well, thank you very much. All right, so we're going to go ahead and move on?
So, we did, is it clear that we give them direct?
Yes, that there's been direction.
I'm sorry, that we give, okay, so that we can make it clear, that we will give you direction. I brought Amy into the mix because I know that she works with the zoning and all that very closely as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. The next one, we have the presentation by San Gabriel, San Gabriel Mosquito and Vector Control District and updates on Zika recent events. So, thank you for being here, and thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Good evening, honorable mayor, members of the council. Thank you for having me out this evening to share with you this information, but also to, thank you very much. To introduce myself, you're probably familiar with my predecessor, Dr. Ken Fujioka, who has recently retired.
Oh, wow.
I took over in April for the organization. But we're really excited to have the city on board with the, with the district. It's an important and key part of the provision of service. If you don't have contiguous service boundaries for vector control, it really makes things difficult to suppress any emergent disease. So, we're going over a couple of, and I also wanted to welcome Councilmember Baca to the Board of Trustees as well.
That's right.
And we'll be, we'll be sharing more on Friday at our, at our Board of Trustees meeting. So, I'm going to give you a brief update on West Nile virus and also Zika virus in the San Gabriel Valley, and kind of a prognosis for the future and our, and our plans moving forward. So, as I'm sure you're all familiar, we, our native species of mosquitoes transmit a lot of different viruses, including West Nile virus, a lot of encephalitis types of viruses, but really more problematic than our native mosquito species are the invasive mosquito species, and those are the Asian tiger mosquito and the yellow fever mosquito. And I hope by illustrating the list of known diseases that they transmit currently in the world helps illustrate the point of how dangerous these new invasive mosquitoes actually are. You're going to probably either stop hearing about Zika virus or hear about it much less frequently in the media as cases start to dwindle globally. This is a natural artifact of these very large, large epidemics of mosquito-borne viruses, but that does not mean we get to forget about the rest of the viruses on that list because now that we have this mosquito in our midst, it is spreading very rapidly. It will soon, as it has globally, be our dominant species of mosquito in the years to come. So, on that list, the ones that we are watching most carefully right now are obviously Zika virus, dengue fever, and yellow fever is making a resurgence, reemergence around the world. But dengue fever is particularly problematic as we have anywhere between 30,000 and 60,000 cases of locally transmitted dengue virus in Mexico each and every year. And it's another disease that because these mosquitoes preferentially feed on humans, is very, very easy to have a traveler go and acquire the virus, come back home here to Baldwin Park, get bitten by one of these mosquitoes, and start a local transmission epidemic in our own backyards. So, our plans are, we operate under the IVM, the Integrated Vector Management Approach, which is our control, reduction, disease surveillance, and a lot of public education and outreach. We cannot do what we do as effectively as we do it without your public being educated, being aware of these disease threats, and knowing what they can do to impact, positively impact, public health in the city. So, switching gears a little bit to West Nile virus before I dive a little bit deeper into Zika virus, I put this chart together to illustrate the persistent threat of West Nile virus. I don't want the council and/or your members of the public to get distracted with news about tropical diseases. We have our own threat in our own backyard that infects and kills members in Los Angeles County each and every year. When West Nile virus came to Los Angeles County in 2004, there was a very large epidemic and there was an immediate subsidence in cases for about three years. There was a four-year cycle that started to develop, and we in the, in the scientific community and the, in the bug world thought, "Okay, great, we're going to have a four-year cycle, we can start planning and preparing for these outbreak years." In 2012, the equation really changed. We had persistent year-over-year high cases, high case counts of West Nile virus, and increased mortality from West Nile virus starting in 2012 and persisting all the way through until last year and in 2017 with 252 cases and 16 human deaths just in Los Angeles County. There were two human infections, known human infections in Baldwin Park last year. They, what I have found in my work with other vector control agencies in Southern California is that once you have a vector control agency that services your community, you start getting the education and the messaging out to your physicians and your medical network, your case counts start to go up. This is not because more people are getting the virus, this is because there's more identification of the virus and there's more testing that occurs. So, it's a little bit artificial, but you may actually get a true look, a true picture of how much virus is actually operating in the city. Okay. Just wanted to put up some maps to show you the enormous challenge our agency has throughout our 27-city jurisdiction. About 7,000 storm drain inlets that are not, not functioning, and these are, these are infrastructure issues, these are subsidence and/or erosion, other issues with the underground storm drain transference systems. The West Nile virus mosquito breeds rapidly and abundantly underground in these systems that hold water year-round. Drainage channels are a constant problem. We treat and inspect about 400 miles throughout the count, throughout the jurisdiction every year. And the bottom graph there is particularly problematic. I haven't added your city, nor have I added Pasadena and South Pasadena, the other two new cities that we've acquired this year. That number will certainly go up. Those are out-of-service backyard swimming pools that, that are really the driver for West Nile virus in combination with those underground storm drains. So, it's an enormous workload for our very small staff to try to keep up on the inspections and treatments of all those backyard swimming pools. So, I'll be reaching out to the city staff to come up with solutions. I will be asking council to look at your own code and your, your own ordinances for the maintenance of backyard swimming pools, to see if there's any way we can bolster together through policy, the elimination of some of these breeding sources, mosquito breeding sources, to take the burden off of our staff. So, Zika virus is a, as a wrap-up from 2015 to 2018, in the United States, this is not globally, there's over 72 countries that had co-infection, simultaneous infection of Zika virus through this time period. Just in the United States, we had about 5,600 imported cases of Zika virus. That's somebody going on vacation, visiting family, friends, and relatives in places that had rampant Zika virus transmission in South America, Central America, the Caribbean, Mexico, a number of places, and brought that virus back to them and were subsequently tested when they got back home. 228 cases, and if you remember back in 2016, there was local transmission in Florida, in Miami, and in the Dade-Winwood area, and there was also transmission about a month later in Texas, in Brownsville, Texas. And so, that accounted for about 228 human cases total. And I, and I put this next fact on the slide just to remind not only you, but, but your residents, that a lot has been said in the press, a lot has been emphasized about the ability of Zika virus to be sexually transmitted and passed from mother to child. This accounts for a very, very small percent of the total Zika virus that has been transmitted globally. The vast majority of cases, the 99% of cases that have been transmitted were through the bite of a mosquito, and that's the bite of the yellow fever mosquito or the Asian tiger mosquito, of which we have both. In Los Angeles County, we noticed a marked difference between 2016 and 2017 imported cases. 2016, there were over 100 in the county, and 2017, it dropped off precipitously to just 17 imported cases reported. This is not too much of a surprise, these viruses that, that, as you use the wildfire analogy, burn very fast and very hot, tend to create a lot of herd immunity very, very quickly in the human population, and in subsequent years, you have far, far fewer human cases. That does not really mean that we are in the clear. Our population is by and large completely naive to the disease. If one of these 17 individuals came back and got bit by a local mosquito, they could certainly cause a local epidemic right here in San Gabriel Valley. Be on the alert for our publications. This is just, just a sample of the dozens of types of publications that we'll be distributing to your community, just so that you're aware and familiar with our logo, so that if you get questions from your residents, they know who to contact, and they're not, they're not, they're not calling city staff, asking for service, so they can start directing those calls to our agency. I wanted to put this up as my concluding slide, just to remind, as I started this presentation, that vector control is a shared responsibility. We cannot do what we do without the public's help. There are too many backyards for my small staff to, to personally inspect. It really takes a community effort, community policing, and a lot of public outreach and education in order to reduce the disease burden. West Nile virus will continue every single year. I make no predictions that it will, that we will ever get rid of West Nile virus. It is what we refer to as endemic. And just to, just to kind of close on, I'll be coming back to council, I'll be requesting to update you on a lot of exciting technology that's coming out in the, in the world of mosquito control. There are a lot of new techniques of nature fighting nature, using bacterium that naturally occurs in nature to help suppress these invasive mosquito species, and we want to be on the forefront of this new technology that is not pesticides, not chemical. This is literally using nature to fight nature. But it's going to take a lot of education for our public to understand the dynamics of, of how it's distributed and why. So, that, that's definitely a conversation for the future, but I do want to let you know we're working in that, that direction. There's some quick contact information, just so if your, if your residents are, are in the audience or at home, they know how to contact us, we're just up the street, feel free to come on by and give you a tour of the facility. With that, I'll take any questions if there's time.
I have a comment.
Thank you very much. Yes, councilmember Susan Rubio.
Well, it's not a question rather than a comment. Several years back, when we were dealing with the, I think, the Asian tiger mosquito, and I was hitting this area pretty aggressively, we embarked on a pretty hard campaign in trying to educate our community, and I think at the time, we also were publicating in one of our, our NOW newspaper, all the ways that they can curb some of the infected areas. So, for example, they were leaving gallons of water, and I still see them, and that's why I'm bringing it up. Our community somehow believes that if they leave water outside in the grass, it grows either faster or greener, and back then, we started sending out information about that because that's where they were actually starting to grow from. And so, I think we should do the same thing again and make sure that we get it publicate, going with all the information, including your contact numbers, so in case they have any questions, they can ask you. But I think it's time to start that aggressive campaign. I'm starting to hear complaints, once again, back then, it was really bad, a lot of people were getting infected, and it worked, but we sort of stopped sending out the information, and I think it's time to pick it up. So, I would suggest that we use his information to put it in the NOW newspaper as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Happy to.
Anyone else wishing to speak? I've not. Thank you very much for the presentation. Yes?
Mayor, just one comment, just to sort of piggyback off of what Councilmember Rubio said. Also, if it would be possible to have another one of the community meetings, preferably in the evening, because that's when a lot of people can attend because they work, I think that the more the people are educated, the better it's going to be in order to understand this problem and to know what to do. I think we were explained that we don't keep, you know, like, let's just like a pan to collect the water when we've got plants outdoors and so forth, to not have those and so forth. So, just little things like that that will help us so that we don't attract more mosquitoes.
Absolutely. We'd be happy to. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Cruz Baca. Thank you very much. Cruz Baca, get up early Friday. The meeting's on Monday at 7:00 AM. 7:00 AM. All right, thank you. She's going to be our represent, Councilmember Cruz Baca is our representative for the mosquito abatement. Remember, Med flying, back in the 70s. All righty, when we got sprayed. All right, okay, so at this point, I'm not seeing any other item on the agenda. Before I begin, I just want to introduce our legal counsel today is Mr. David Olivas. David Olivas, former resident of San Pablo Park and also served as a council member as well. So, thank you very much.
Very well.
And a graduate from the prestigious University of Harvard. All right, thank you very much. All right, our legal counsel, Robert DeFoe, is out on vacation until the following meeting. All right, so at this point, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco?
Yes, Mayor, I'd just like to go over the rules of decorum for public speaking, and if I can have that slide just for a moment there. And this is just so everybody could recognize what we're doing. So, we have an ordinance for decorum and order. Each person who addresses the council shall do so in orderly manner and shall not make personal slanderous or profane remarks to any member of the council or the general public. And we, I'll just kind of go through it quickly here. Any person who makes such remarks or who utters loud, threatening, personal, or abusive language, or engages in any other disorderly conduct which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the council meeting shall at the discretion of the presiding officer or a majority of the council be banned from further audience before the council during the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, heckling, stamping of feet, whistling, yells, applause, and similar disruptions which disrupts, otherwise impede the orderly conduct of the council meeting should not be permitted. And I think there's a second slide to that. Diswhile addressing the council, subject to compliance with the rules of order and decorum, members of the public have an absolute right to address the council to open meetings during oral communication segments and, and of the agenda subject to reasonable time constraint imposed by the presiding officer or a majority of the council members. Consistent with the Brown Act, speakers are limited to speaking on items presented on the agenda and to items within the subject matter jurisdiction and authority of the city council or city. Manner of addressing the council, at the appropriate time, any person wishing to address the council should stand, proceed to the lectern, and wait to be recognized by the presiding officer of the meeting. After being recognized, the speaker should state his or her name and place of residence of the, on record. The speaker should address comments only to the council from the lectern. And our last slide there is, all remarks and questions should be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any specific council member, staff, and audience, or the media. No questions should be asked of a council member or staff member without first obtaining permission from the presiding officer of the meeting. Comments should be fundamentally impersonal. The subject should be of debate, is the issue, not any of its proponents or opponents. A motion and its consequences may be attacked. Vigor see by speakers should not attack the motives, character, or personality of a member, speaker, or of any other person. Now withstanding the foregoing, no speaker will be censored or prohibited from speaking based upon the content of his or her remarks, but may be removed from the meeting if the presiding officer of the- officer of the meeting or a majority of the council members determines the speaker's is out of order pursuant to this chapter, and the speaker's conduct is disrupting or disturbing, or otherwise impeding the orderly conduct of the council meeting. And that's it. And then the rest is just enforcement of decorum, going through the police chief. And we have the presiding officer shall request that a person who is breaking the rules of decorum be orderly and silent if after receiving a warning from the presiding officer, a person persists in disturbing the meeting. The presiding officer shall order him or her to leave the council meeting. If such person does not remove himself or herself, the presiding officer may order any law enforcement officer who is on duty at the meeting, sergeant of arms of the council, to remove that person from the council chambers. Is that it? Okay. And just fated to observe any of the rules. The fated to observe such rules strictly does not affect the jurisdiction of the council or invalidate any action taken at a meeting and otherwise conforms to applicable law. Any member may move to require the presiding officer of the meeting to enforce the rules, and affirmative vote of a majority of the members present will require him to do so. So I just wanted to put out the rules of decorum that I think this year, we'll, everybody be aware of them, and we'll be following those rules throughout the year. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor.
Yes, councilman. Yeah, councilmember Cruzbaca.
I would also, I'd like to add that I think that these rules of decorum should also apply to the council members and the mayor and anyone up here on the dais. We had an incident, as we all know, at the last council meeting, and I believe that we too have to follow those rules and respect the people that get up to speak. We may not always agree with them, but we do have to respect that they have their three minutes.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. All right. So before I bring out the actual meeting itself, I want to just correct something for the record that was made last, the last meeting where Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco stated that you voted for the cannabis. So was I. So I don't think I was as vocal as I should have been, but that's in the record because there was three of us here. So I just want to correct that for the record. All right. Thank you very much. All right. So at this point, I'd like to open up the public communication. Anyone wishing to speak, you have approximately three minutes. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Dean Simpson. I live in Agoura Hills, California. I'm following up with Mr. Romo's input he gave you. I manage a business park on Brooks Drive between River Grade and Little John, and basically there's a hundred thousand feet that's carved up into little rental units, probably about fifty of them. The size of the physical units are fifteen hundred to twenty-five hundred square feet. Typically, when the building was built in the late eighties, it was all approved fine. Ninety-seven zoning code update, it was fine. Something happened between two thousand nine and two thousand twelve. Don't know, I wasn't involved with the project at that time. But the typical small business, whether they're coming from out of the city or from their home to start a new business, they come in and one of the things they have to do is get a business license. Well, we found out that now that any type of warehouse operation, whether they're buying and selling some goods or whatever, they have to go through a conditional use permit. These are small businesses that typically, they come in, they will look for a space a month or two before they're ready to go. They are not prepared, nor do they have the knowledge or the skill set, to get all the copies, all the documents that are required for a CUP, and pay the fees, knowing they may not even get approval for it. So all of a sudden, this thing is stretched out. What happens is people don't get business licenses, and we've been trying to go through there and push everyone to do everything legit. Amy has helped me out in the past, and Gus, when he came on board, we found out what it is. I don't know if anyone was here, because I'm not familiar with you all, what happened around two thousand twelve to change it, but there's all kinds of business parks like ours within the city, so everyone's got to be feeling the same thing. And that's all. I just wanted you to understand the product and what the problem is that we're having. Any questions?
That's about it. All right. Thank you. We'll be addressing that just so that you know. So we'll have a follow-up, of course. We need to bring it up to the Twenty-First Century Code. So thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
All right. Moving along with public communication. Oh, Terry Muse. Thought I saw her eating a sandwich over at Jersey Mike's.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Terry Muse from Waste Management. I'm here to give you the twenty-seventeen year review for all the recycling that's been happening in Baldwin Park. First of all, in twenty-seventeen, thirteen thousand tons of recyclables were diverted from the waste stream coming out of Baldwin Park. The top three things that were recycled in Baldwin Park are green waste, paper, and construction debris. So most of the other recyclables, like bottles and cans, are being taken back to get redeemed for cash. Residential recycling has remained the same since twenty-sixteen. It's about thirty-four percent. That's how much recyclables are being put in the recycling carts by the residents. Businesses also pretty much stayed the same in terms of their recycling, about four percent. In twenty-seventeen, we're recycling. However, in twenty-seventeen, there was a tremendous amount of outreach by Vicky Valverde from Public Works and Waste Management to businesses who are not compliant with the state's recycling law, AB three forty-one and AB eighteen twenty-six. And as a result, close to ten percent more third-party recycling was identified, and this is where companies are doing their own corporate program, like grocery stores might be back hauling their recyclables to their distribution center, which is fine, but the problem was Baldwin Park was not getting credit for that. So as a result, that actually increased the commercial diversion to nearly fifteen percent. And something new in Baldwin Park is that we're offering organics recycling, which is picking up food waste, and Smart and Final, Courtyard Marriott, and Denny's are all participating in that program, which is great because that puts them in compliance with AB eighteen twenty-six. Lots change in the recycling world. You probably have heard China's not accepting, they're only accepting a zero-point-five percent contamination, so we're really working hard to get residents and businesses to learn how to recycle right. So we are having a tour of our Azusa Materials recycling facility. It'll be Tuesday, April tenth, from ten to twelve, and it's going to be free to the first one hundred people who want to come. We've got to kind of make sure we have enough time to give everyone a tour, but we're going to show you what to put in your recycling bin and what not to put in your recycling bin. Number one thing is no food and no plastic bags. If you could just remember that, that would make things a whole lot better. And really quick, my forty seconds, I wanted to talk about the Business Association. We are going to be hosting the State of the City, which is going to include the Business Association, the city, and the school district, March twenty-ninth, eight-thirty AM at the senior center. So you'll be seeing more about that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Members of the council, staff, public. I like Ricardo Pacheco's comments. However, I think we all have to look at the mirror. I do agree with Cruzbaca's recommendation that the council must abide by the rules. I'm not sure, I like the idea that we don't need to applause. It's already a given, that we shouldn't be applauding pros or cons or yea or nay. However, those remarks that were made by Councilmember Pacheco right now, I don't think the attorney has reviewed this, because some of those comments there are against the rubber rules of order. I don't agree with some of the comments presented by Mayor Protem Pacheco, because I don't think the attorney, and if they did review it, and they're in agreement, I think they need to review them again. And I like the subject, indeed, we're only going to stick to the subject and discussion. It should also be to each and every one of you speaking, because half of you speaking items are not on the agenda each and every day. That's why these council meetings go till ten, eleven o'clock, and as we hear our mayor, he wants to get out of here. So do we. Then, the attorney needs to review, and I agree that it should be in order and presented new rules. We've definitely been needing them for years. I would like to see them followed. I would like to see our attorney, whether it's Mr. Tafoya or our present attorney, to really review them and come back with a revised edition of those rules because they're not appropriate. Thank you very much.
All right. Moving along with public communication.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, staff, and residents of Baldwin Park. My name is Christine Alario. I'm the library manager at the Baldwin Park Library. I just wanted to tell everybody about two upcoming programs that we have. On Wednesday, February fourteenth, from six-thirty to seven-thirty, we're having a Black History Month celebration. We'll have an African drum and dance program. Audience participation will include a drum, circle, and dance, and this is for all ages. And then coming up on Saturday, February seventeenth, at two o'clock, our Friends of the Library are generously sponsoring an author program with author Jaime Alvarez. He's an award-winning author, and he will discuss his book, Sudden Death: Beautiful Life, which is a true story of one man's experience with death and the visit to the afterlife. I hope all of you can come and join us. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you very much. All right. Moving along with public communication.
One of the things that I saw at the last meeting that we had, it was very racist. Okay? Some that your First Amendment does give you the privilege to talk, and Mr. Pacheco wasn't letting the gentleman talk. To me, I've seen races through the country, but that was very bad, very out of line. The lawyer that was here, Robert, should have put a stop to it if he's a lawyer. One of the things, okay? So you're, in other words, you guys are trying to take our First Amendment's rights. That's something that you guys cannot do it. It has to go through the Supreme Court for you guys to take our First Amendment's rights, okay? One of the things, Mayor, you were here when all that commotion was here. You were sitting on the side where Mr. Pacheco used to sit. You should put a stop to it. As a mayor, you should have put a stop to it. It was very unhuman what he was doing to that gentleman. He was just here to give Shannon a little speech for Shannon. But Mr. Pacheco went out of line, can't talk about it, he has to go by the agenda and everything. One of the things that we have to look at with this marijuana thing that we're doing, seems like a lot of people are getting kickbacks or something. New cars, new suits, no eyeglasses. Where's all that money coming from? Okay? So that's one of the things you have to look at. Have your lawyers look into what you guys are trying to do. Okay? That's all.
Thank you very much. All right. Moving along with public communication.
I would have rathered Manny be sitting in his usual position at the last meeting, but I saw what was done to those black men. You know, we live in a different world now. These people sue for anything. Why aggravate it and risk a lawsuit here? I would think you'd have enough of those already without doing these types of things. You're finally going to get the vector control. Now, I didn't stay here long enough for that to happen. One of the things with that is people that have flower pots that sit in bases that have water, the pots should sit on the ground or on the grass so that there is no standing water. Mosquitoes love standing water. Pools, things of this type should be pumped dry and/or covered up. Rain barrels can be covered up once they're full so the mosquitoes can't get in there to start doing their things. There's things people can do. A friend of mine had a basin in front. I thought, oh, there's water in there. I dumped it over. It didn't look like it smelled that bad, but, ooh, it was bad. Breeding ground for mosquitoes, they were all over the place in there. So it's, but as far as this decorum that you speak of, I've seen you, councilmembers, go after each other, and if you're supposed to lead by example for the kids in this city, that's not a very good example. I could have used another term, but I don't say things like that. Not here, anyway. As for First Amendment, we have First Amendment right. That's what the soldiers, people that fight our wars and stuff, fought for First Amendment. If you disagree with the flag over there, maybe a swastika is more better for some of you, because that's what you want. You don't want to hear from the people, so you try to curtail their free speech, and it's not allowed, not in this country, anyway. If you're not happy here, North Korea might take you. Can't say anything over there. Don't try to take anything from over there either. They, well, you know what happened with that. The bottom line is, free speech is just that, free speech. Now, granted, not to be threatening to anybody or cursing and swearing, I don't think that's necessary to be done here, you know? Even me, with my mouth, the way I talk about things, I was talking to a person I knew forty years ago, and they wouldn't say, you know what, if they had a mouthful, and I sure wasn't going to stand there and say anything. I had to be very careful, and I talk to people that don't talk that way, not to say things that they don't want to hear. I know that's... Oh, already?
Thank you very much. All right. Moving along with public communication.
Greg Tuttle, business owner. You guys just don't learn your lesson with the First Amendment right. I just can't believe it. You just lost over two hundred thousand with the city with the First Amendment rights with the sign with Pacheco's face on it. You still don't learn. If you want to go ahead with this, you go ahead, because my attorney needs extra work. We'll just go ahead and sue for First Amendment on the council meetings. Now, Monica, I want to introduce you to my daughter. That's Lisa Tuttle. That is the one that you keep saying that she's so terrified of me and all these evil things that happened in our personal life, and you keep bringing it out at the council meetings when I pick on you. So she's here to answer any questions that you have about her life. Okay, princess? Now, about political prostitution, wow, we saw your donations. Who's who are the weed growers and the attorneys that work for it? And Albright has a disbarred attorney doing all negotiations for our city. Why is that allowed? Why doesn't our city manager do his homework on these people? Then, Mr. Olivas, I'm sure glad you're here tonight. Planning commission meeting I went to, and this was great. We're talking about Brandywine, and the, a lot of the commissioners had issues. So they're saying, well, we need to bring this back. We need more discussion. Well, Mr. Olivas says, well, it's already been voted on by the council. It's already been approved, so, you know, well, what do you want to do? Well, that's just like, why do we have a planning commission? You guys already rubber-stamp it down up here, and then you bring it back to planning? Whoops, we forgot planning. That's how you did all the weed growers, too. You brought them in, took all their money, and then what happened afterwards? You send code enforcement out to look at all the buildings and properties after the fact. Some of these guys won't qualify. Brandywine doesn't qualify over there because you let two weed growers grow right up next to a residential area that you're trying to put in there. Nobody has any foresight here. Hurry up and get the money, get the payoffs, the donations, the link, what was it, that car that you got there? Lincoln Navigator, wasn't it? And then you got your eyes done? Oh, that's good, princess. And you're buying some new suits, other than Walmart special. Good job. Now then, the Sid Masavi deal. You got sexual harassment person that came in here that left the city of Baldwin Park under a black cloud because Nancy Hutter made an accusation as sexual harassment. Now you keep bringing this guy's company back in, back in. He left here under a black cloud when he was Public Works Director and was doing harassing with all the employees in here, but you keep letting this individual come back in the city because he lines all of your pockets up. We all know about it. I've been there at Pacheco's meetings where he got a fucking pocket, excuse the language. He got an envelope full of cash. I sat there and watched him count it. This is disgusting, and you guys need to learn to start letting, open it up to bids for these other guys in here.
Thank you very much. All right. At this point, moving along with public communication.
I'm going to go ahead and take this on a whole different direction. My name is Daisy Cruz, and I'm here today because I'd like to address the city's environmental burden. According to the EPA, Baldwin Park is at the ninety-fifth to one hundredth percentile in environmental pollution. And I was here during the last city council meeting to introduce a resource that could potentially benefit residents, and Grid Alternatives is a nonprofit organization that I currently have a... And Grid Alternatives is a nonprofit organization that I currently have a fellowship with that trains and educates communities about solar and provides homeowners with solar systems at absolutely no cost as it is fully funded by the state of California. Grid Alternatives aims to train people of all backgrounds. I myself volunteered for an install in Baldwin Park not that long ago. And also tries to, may also try to, that also may be at risk for recidivism and have placed approximately 90 people into the solar industry last year, whether it would be for installation or solar system design or any combination thereof. And I grew up in Baldwin Park, I've been here my whole life. And I want to make sure people know of this resource if they really do need it and have the opportunity for clean, attainable energy. And I hope that I could set up some time to talk to any of you to see how Grid Alternatives can help the community and at the same time also help homeowners with their electricity bills and reducing it by 50 to 90%. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. All right, anyone else wishing to speak? Now, I now declare the public communication. Yeah, you want to come up here? All right, here we go.
Hi, my name is Andy Su. I just want to ask, like, my uncle buy a land with the IC zoning, but we are told by the planning department that it's not, we cannot use for warehouse. And I was wondering if we can get any direction, like, when the champion, that the IC zoning, whether the IC zoning will, city will adopt the warehouse use as well?
Yeah, you know, I think that's what we were talking about earlier with the gentleman. So Mr. Gus Romo, if you could get together with the gentleman and assist him in that area, we'll see what we can do to assist you.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much. We could exchange your cards with him. All right, appreciate that. All right, thank you. At this point, move on with public communication. All right, see no further interest. Oh, one more? Okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Just one small comment.
Yes, sir.
Psalm 15:3. The eyes of the Lord in every place keep watching the evil and the good. I'm not accusing anyone. Psalm 62. People shake hands, curse within. I've said it before. Just a reminder, guys, I mean, you guys are sitting, you guys all have a good job, you guys are blessed, you guys are breathing. One thing this young man said, and I've heard it. Beauty amongst each other, that's not good. I think that we all take time to really count our blessings day by day. And I don't know how true any of these accusations are. I'm not the just judge, but just a reminder, I made a lot of mistakes. When I started walking straight, things just came really good. So, just a reminder, just, guys, one thing I'm going to leave you with, it's kind of, I'm not accusing, it's not my business. But I remember FBI agents saying, when they arrested Sheriff Block, she said, no one's above the law. Again, just if things are happening within, walk straight, you'll be blessed continually. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much, good evening. All right, move along with public communication. At this point, declare the public communication.
Mayor, if you have a moment, I'd like to just address some of the issues. Can we put on some of the slide for the second one? I also want to just talk about that, if you look at our now, we've gone over a lot of the accomplishments that we've had for the city. And there's a lot of work that we're working on here in the community. First, let me just say that today, Jersey Mike and Chipotle and some of the other branding stores are opening up near the Alley Fitness. Today, we had a groundbreaking, I'm sorry, the opening for Jersey Mike. Very interesting background on the owner, Alvarado Garcia, how he came from humble beginnings and started to work on a number of Jersey Mikes. And now he's the owner of about 56 stores, one of which is in Baldwin Park. And it's a really nice store that he made. So we were there earlier, sandwiches were really good, and invite everybody to go there. We also have a new street sweeper that's outside, it's there for test drive, you know, rides, anybody want to check it out? That was brought out there. And I think it's, isn't it a natural gas car? So, a natural gas street sweeper, so. And also just want to show some of the accomplishments we've had. There's a number of accomplishments, but I've only selected a few. As you know, we did open the Alley Fitness, if you want to back up one slide there. The Alley Fitness opened up this year, very well received, a lot of community members are participating in this, helping the city stay healthy. And next to that, if you open up the next slide, it's this Alley Fitness is a new 45,000 square foot state-of-the-art fitness center equipped with full court basketball, swimming pool, and spa, men's and women's locker rooms, indoor cycling classes, free weights, wide variety of cardio and strength equipment, plus a dedicated personal training area. Restaurants that are there and just opened up was Jersey Mike's, Wawa Grill, Chipotle, and Coffee Bean, and Tea Leaf. So I think that just demonstrates how the city is working hard with economic development to make sure that we get all these wonderful stores within the city Baldwin Park. And that one's just right off the freeway. We also have, some of you noticed, some new bus stop improvements. We've done a number of, these are solar bus stops, new trash cans have been put out in the main streets and thoroughfares of the city, just so everybody uses. We have replaced 22 bus shelters with all-new enclosed modern design. We replaced all bus stop signs with new redesigned, high-visibility signs. We installed new RAP design on five transit buses, replaced 22 trash cans with new decorative design, and constructed ADA improvements at various bus stops and access points. As you notice, we've done the medium landscaping improvements. We've done, we've reduced yearly water consumption by 94%, so we have a fully operative irrigation system that's also monitored through Wi-Fi, through our staff. We planted over 250 trees and palms. We've installed state-of-the-art smart irrigation system and installed all-new drought-tolerant landscaping. Is that it? Okay, so you can read more about the wonderful accomplishments we've done here in our city in our now. And it's, you know, just the council working together to try to improve the city, to spend your tax dollars wisely. So thank you very much, Mayor.
No, thank you. Yes, Councilmember Cruzbaca.
Yes, I would like to give a direction, and I know that our legal counsel is on vacation, but I know that Mr. Olivas is very familiar with the city of Baldwin Park. I would like for there to be a review of the orders of decorum. I think that we really need to see them. I believe that when I saw one of the slides, it said that it had been voted on in 2010. I think at the bottom, that's what it said. I would really like to see, because I do not want to be, and I think I mentioned it at the last council meeting when we had problems, I do not want to be in violation of the First Amendment rights. I don't want to see that. So I think that if, if Mr. Tafoya could please, or Mr. Olivas could please take a look at the orders of decorum, as the city has them now, and review and see what is, are they up to date? What do we need to improve or keep them the way they are? I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Let me just add, 2010, because I remember I was here, that's the actual city ordinance? We have not adopted a Robert Rules of Order, so we need to look at that. That is, I didn't see that, but yeah, that's definitely an old, and it's part of the city ordinance.
No, Mayor, those items are, I did go over with the attorney, those are, you know, state...
No, I know.
They're supported by the state.
They're part of the ordinance, the city ordinance.
That is an ordinance, yeah, from the city. Those are, you know, state laws have supported them. We could have the attorney review them. I just think that most cities follow that type of decorum. I've checked other cities, and there's nothing on there that is prohibiting anybody in violation of their First Amendment right. All those are actually, you know, other cities have that, and none of that violates your right to speak. You know, you can come up there and speak all you want. Those are just rules of decorum that, you know, that you can have. If you disrupt a meeting, that's a different scenario. That means, you know, anybody, and we have done that, are removed from the meeting. But pretty much everybody comes up here and says, and are allowed to speak, you know, as they felt. You know, the gentleman that came last time, that, you know, he was allowed to speak. I allowed him to speak, I just questioned him that he was, you know, not, you have to speak within the jurisdiction of the city, but nonetheless, he was still allowed to speak. And so I didn't stop him from speaking, so I didn't violate anybody's freedom of speech. And his decorum rules do not violate any freedom of speech. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you.
Mayor. I still, I'm sorry, but I appreciate Council, Vice Mayor Pacheco's comments, but I really do believe that we need to review that. I have to beg to differ with you. You were trying to stop that gentleman from speaking, and you interrupted him many times, even though he didn't ask for extra time. I do not want to see, and I don't think any of us would like to see that type of an incident again. It doesn't give the city a good, I mean, I heard so many comments from other council members in other cities as I was going to meetings or seeing them somewhere about how bad that looked. So I would really like for there to be some review and to make sure that we are within the context of our First Amendment rights.
Mayor?
Thank you.
I would disagree with Cruzbaca. I think that, again, I allowed the individual to speak and he did have a right to speak, and so things move forward. But I'm not going to continue this discussion. I would like to move on with the meeting, thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Cruzbaca.
Also, I would like to get the information from Ms. Cruz. I know that this is the second time that she's gotten up, and if she would please hand it over to the city treasurer, if you have a card or something, so that we can contact you. I know you've come twice and we didn't get it the last time, so I'm sure all of us would appreciate that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
No, it's closed, sorry about that. Public communication closed. No, no, it's closed. Thank you.
May?
All right, go ahead, Council.
Just before we close the meeting, I just wanted to invite the residents and the community to come and have coffee with our police officers. The event is February 13th, it's a Tuesday, at 10:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. in McDonald's here in Baldwin Park. It's not a program, just come and ask questions and get familiar with our police department, and they're there to serve you. So please join them. And they also have a blood drive, I believe it's in conjunction with other public safety agencies. And this blood drive is going to take place on Wednesday, February 28th, at 11:00 a.m. I'm sorry, from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. right here at the Arc Center, so please come and donate. Right now, there's a lot of need for many reasons. And once again, being sponsored by the police department here in Baldwin Park and another opportunity to come and get to know them and ask any questions you like. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilmember, excuse me, Susan Rubio.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Maria Garcia.
Thank you. First of all, I just handed my contact information, so I wanted to make sure she got that okay. Second, you know, I just want to, I just want to say that I truly honor, you know, forgiveness and respect and healing, and I think that is wonderful. And with all due respect to, you know, the comments that were made earlier, as a council member for now 11 years, there is an individual who has harassed me for as long as I've been a council member and has made very derogatory comments, not only towards me, but towards a former chief of police. And I tried, based on this alarming behavior, I tried to seek protection for myself, and I tried to get a restraining order against this individual. But because I'm a public official, I don't have the same privacies that a, let's say, private citizen would have, many of you have. And so there's a higher threshold for, you know, being able to get a restraining order. And so what I've done is, I have mentioned a restraining order that had been issued against this individual. And what I've done is, I really wanted to protect myself, but also to demonstrate that this individual has had a pattern of being verbally abusive towards women. And so this is, you know, unfortunately, you can't erase what has already been done. And this is a restraining order that was issued by Superior Court of the State of California, County of Los Angeles, Pomona. And it was issued by a woman by the name of Sheila Ann Tuttle against Greg Sebastian Tuttle. And in her, in her declaration, she states, "I am seeking this order on an ex parte application based on the fact the respondent has caused physical harm to our daughter and is mentally abusing both of us to the point we are in fear of our lives." And I'm not making this up. I mean, this is what, this is what was issued, you know, by a woman, and a restraining order was issued by a court. And I'm just bringing it up simply to show that there has been a pattern. And again, I need to protect myself because nobody else is protecting me, the courts have not. You know, nobody on this, no other women on this dais have stood up to speak out against this person and his behavior, his remarks, his abusive behavior towards me. So I just, I need to protect myself. And so this is why I have unfortunately had to bring this up. I believe in peace, I believe in forgiveness, I believe in healing, and I welcome the opportunity just as, you know, as has, as you have experienced, excuse me, I welcome that. But I do need to protect myself, and I need to sound the alarms because I'm clearly not the only person that has experienced this by this individual. And I need the protection. And if nobody else is going to protect me, I need to protect myself. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor, they will go over to...
I would just like to, in unison with Councilwoman Garcia, has said, there is a member in the audience who comes to every meeting and makes remarks, and I'm all for freedom of speech, and I believe everybody has a right to come here and say that. But when there's activity that occurs outside of the context of this room that are threatening and damaging to myself, you know, I think we have to sound an alarm and begin to talk about it and the types of activities that are being taken place that are against, you know, personally my life and the types of things that occur. I'll have a picture that I'll bring next week that expresses the escalation of the activity of this individual and why he comes to this point. We went to a, there was a terrorism conference that was held at one of our conferences not too long ago. And I know we all talk about terrorism, like, in terms of ISIS and all those national terrorists that are out there, but it talked about local terrorism, local people that you think are just, you know, normal people that would come here, but they've become so frustrated with the system that they'll actually shoot their board members. Now, there was incidents that were recorded that there was frustration with a business owner, and he came and shot council members. There was another issue that took place at a board meeting that they also shot board members. So, you know, when I watch this individual and his motive of escalation, it just, it does frighten me, bothers me. You know, he puts, you know, portraits of me outside as, you know, a mule, whatever you want to call it now. That's discriminatory, you know, I'm a Latino male, and yet he's discriminating against me, trying to mock me in this fashion. I think it's just out of the context of freedom of speech. Yes, it's free, yes, you can do that, but is it really going to prove a point here? I mean, what is the point? I will show you the picture that he sent me on New Year's of a derogatory picture that he sent toward me, and I will bring that up at this next council meeting. And, you know, is that really necessary? Is it really necessary to escalate, you know, to that point? I mean, is that freedom of speech or is that hate speech? And we need to begin to look at that. And I will announce it because I want on record what this individual, you know, has done. I mean, things to me that I believe are tied to him, but I have no proof at this point of burning property that I have in another city, just other issues that have happened to me during this time is just, you know, just wrong. I mean, you can come here and stand there and criticize me, you know, and I take it. When you go outside of that context and escalate your behavior differently, you know, then, you know, you concern yourself. Will he be one of those individuals that shoots their government officials by standing there at the podium and pointing a gun at them? I'll bring those issues up. I mean, it does happen, and, you know, we have to just be aware of them, so I'm just bringing those points up. So, thank you, Mayor.
And Councilmember, Vice Mayor, at this point, Councilmember Cruzbaca.
Yes, I am going to make an invitation, and the adult school is having walk-ins. Yes, I am going to make an invitation, and the adult school is having walk-ins with free haircuts and shaves for the month of February, for any of you that would be interested in going. It's on Wednesdays and Thursdays from 6:00 to 8:30 p.m., and on Saturdays from 8:30 to 11:00 in the morning. It's a wonderful opportunity. The students do a great job. Remember that they're being supervised by their instructors, so it's not like they're going to go crazy with the scissors or with the razor. So for all, any of you that would like a free haircut or a shave for the gentleman, of course, please come and support our adults cosmetology school. Thank you.
All right. All right, thank you. If anyone else wishes to say any other words? I just want, I just want to first of all say, we need to move forward, and of course, we've had differences of opinion, and I understand that. And I understand Monica Garcia, which you've said, yes, you have been attacked here for many, many years by this particular individual, and it's not fair. Now, yes, that person has the right, the constitutional right, to come up here and express himself, the First Amendment, and she has a right to be, to be able to also read off the particular restraining order that was at one time issued by the Pomona Court. So, and that's public access as well. So Councilmember Monica Garcia has that right, and it is definitely a warning, because I have grown concerned whether this potentially could turn into a hate type of speech. So those are something that I probably will address with the legal council at the next meeting, for us to be able to look at that. Councilmember Carrillo, yes, I was totally shocked when you sent me that picture where this particular individual is, has your picture, and he's, the middle finger is right towards your face. I mean, that gets sent to your home? That's alarming. That is definitely alarming, and I think you and your wife should have some type of plan, emergency type of plan for this particular, as you mentioned, local terrorist. And it is a concern. And again, let me go back. I want to move forward, but at the same time, we need to, I need to air that, because the Constitution of this country allows anyone here in the audience to come up here, accuse me, accuse any of the council members of anything, and we have absolutely zero recourse. And if it's false, most of it is fabricated, that's the unfortunate part, that we have no recourse whatsoever. But we'll do what we need to do on our end to be able to protect ourselves. I know this past weekend, I was unable to attend the Santa Barbara, is it this weekend or last weekend? Last weekend? And I believe this particular individual showed up there again. I mean, he has a right, I understand that part, but at the same time, it is a concern, because you were there by yourself, and something like that. So keep up what you're doing, and we need to involve law enforcement in whatever capacity to make sure that there's a documentation in case something does occur to both of you, then we all know. And of course, that's why I'm sharing it here publicly. All right, so at this point, let's go ahead and move on. Before I forget, Mr. Woods, Mrs. Woods, haven't seen you in a long time, out in your vehicle, so it's nice to see you here, because this couple right here, it's 60 years, right? 61 years, married together, and they live down the street where I'm at, and I usually see them in their blue truck. I have a lady, and I haven't, I know, we just want to recognize your wife as well, because this is like, this couple's a major team together, so thank you for being here. Haven't seen you in a while. All right, thank you. At this point, I'd like to go over to the consent calendar, where we have items once through eight. Councilmembers wishing to pull any item?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Cruzbaca.
Three, four, and five.
Three, four, and five. All righty, councilmembers wishing to pull any other items? If not, can we entertain a motion to pass Consent Calendar, with the exception of three, four, and five?
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Cruzbaca. First one, by Councilmember Cruzbaca, item number three, which is the appropriate additional fund for the city's traffic signal and street lighting maintenance program. Councilmember Cruzbaca.
Yes, I just have a question. I guess I direct that to you, right, Sam?
That's right.
Okay, I just have one question. Are any of these traffic lights that are going to be replaced, were they-
Hold on, real quick, I don't mean to interrupt. Gus, did you make, did you guys make the contact? I don't want to make sure you-
Talking to Amy.
Okay, very good, thank you. Sorry about that, Councilmember Cruzbaca.
No, that's all right. I just have a question. Any of these traffic lights that will be replaced, were any of them knocked over by a traffic accident or something like that, or is it just that they just need to be replaced?
Actually, four traffic signal controllers were hit by, were replaced due to a collision. And there's two traffic signal poles that were also replaced due to a collision.
Okay, so we're going to be collecting funds for that, for the replacement of these, if it was a collision?
Yes, we are working with not all cases. Some cases are hidden runs, and we don't have the information, but on the cases where the police report was filed, we are seeking reimbursement.
Okay, how, what's the process of that, of collecting the funds for that?
So we send a, we send a traffic signal report and our maintenance report to our risk management with HR, and then they handle it, and we just answer questions as they come up.
Okay, thank you. Then I make a motion to appropriate additional funds for the city's traffic signal and street lighting maintenance program.
All right, I'll second. Any objections? Seeing none, so move. Item number four, which is the approval of the General On-Call Engineering Professional Services Agreement for Engineering Design, Plant Check, Construction, Management Inspection and Related Services. Councilmember Cruzbaca.
Yes, I know that this was voted three to two, I believe, at the last council meeting. However, I do have to mention that I am very concerned about this five-year contract again, and I am not happy with some of the services that have been, that have been fulfilled, and maybe some of the completions that have not been made, and yet they have been paid in full. The other thing is, is that I would really like to, and I don't know, because I didn't see the MOU, or I don't remember, if there was a clause in there that said that they would not get paid after invoicing for 30 days, not upon receipt, but in 30 days. Do you, does it, can anyone tell me if that's in the MOU? Collection of, collection of, in the contract?
We have, we use our standard boilerplate agreement forms for it. We just modified it for the term of the service. There is a compensation clause, where it says that their invoices have to have some sort of backup information or additional information, maybe at a 35 or 25, 65 or 95% completion of a project. It does not say specifically that there is a 30-day wait for the invoices, but that is standard industry policy. That's what we use, 30 days to pay our invoices.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember. At this point-
Well, I'm sorry, I have a clarifying question. So you said, is industry standard to pay in advance or wait 30 days?
Within 30 days.
Within 30 days, okay, thank you.
All right, no further questions. I'll go ahead and make a motion to pass item four, which is the approval of general on-call engineering. That's my motion.
I'll second.
Second, any objections?
Yes.
All right, madam, at this point, our city treasurer, Maria Contral, there is one, am I correct, just one objection, so we'll take roll call?
No.
All right, so at this point, we'll go ahead and take roll call. So this is, this is for the passing of item number four.
No.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Rubio?
No.
Mayor Lozano?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Pacheco.
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes at three, two. All right, thank you. Thank you very much. All right, this one will go to, yes, Councilmember Monica Garcia.
I would like to make a comment. I know, like, for the median project, it seemed, it seemed like that project was parceled out, and there was a lot of kind of confusion as to who was doing what. And I remember, you know, calling and asking about the debris and the cones that were being left in the median over the weekend, and the response back was, oh, you know, this company is taking care of the inspection. But then, you know, when I would inquire, it was, it just wasn't really clear. So I would like to just encourage that when we have a project, that, you know, the people who are working on it begin from the start to finish, because when things start to go wrong, at least we can hold that person or that entity responsible and accountable versus, okay, well, they did this, and, you know, they did this, and that, I think, is not efficient, and it's also just confusing for, you know, the project management, and for those of us who are trying to understand what is going on. So please, I would like to encourage, you know, start to finish, if you can, if you can, you know, identify who is going to be managing that, and give that the responsibility, and then let us hold that entity or person accountable.
Will do, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All righty, okay, so at this point, we'll go down to item five, which is the, Councilmember Cruzbaca, accept and authorize the filing of the notice of completion for the city project number 2016-0135, Morgan Park Aquatic Center, ceiling maintenance, and additional work to paint interior walls. So this one, Councilmember Cruzbaca.
I just have one question, and I believe this is to Manny Correo, correct? I've been asked by a lot of the seniors, will there be notification when that is completed so that they can start using the pool again? They're coming and asking me, do you know when we can start swimming again?
Yes.
Oh, it's right.
Yes, but the pool should be complete within the next four weeks or so, so we will definitely make some announcements in regards to the seniors.
Okay, thank you very much. So I make a motion to pass and accept and authorize the filing of a notice of completion for city project number 2016-0135, Morgan Park Aquatic Center, ceiling maintenance, and additional work to paint interior walls and replaster swimming pool.
I'll second.
Any objections? Seeing none, so move. All right, this one will go over to item six, which is approval of the memorandum of understanding between the city of Baldwin Park-
Oh, no, we passed those.
Item nine.
I just want to make sure you guys are on top of this.
Mayor?
So at this point, we'll go over to item, yes.
I have a question about item nine, and I would like to see, I know that I was the one that suggested to bring it back, but I would really like to give a chance to Edison to come and do a presentation. I would like to ask our CEO to please contact, I don't know, the gentleman that brought us the check, I don't know if he's the rep?
Yes, the rep.
Oh. If, or he or staff could please come and give us a presentation on behalf of Edison before we make this decision? I would really like to give them that chance.
Yeah, why don't we do that? Could we reschedule then?
Yeah, for March.
You could just hear the presentation.
Sure, that's fine, because I know that they're usually here, but if we could schedule it for March, that would be great. Thank you.
All right, so at this point, let's have the representative come up here.
Oh, okay.
And we'll do, oh, we have two. So introduce yourself.
Sal is from Edison, right?
Yes, I'm the Edison rep.
So I would like to bring back a study, for him to bring his staff. I don't know if he wants to talk now, but-
Well, I could bring a staff member, a subject matter expert in March, if you'd like, and they could go over everything.
Let's do that, March.
So you guys can make a better decision, before you spend $63,000 on the study.
We have someone here that's going to present. Let's hear that presentation.
Yeah.
All right, okay, that's fine.
Before we make a decision.
Okay, all righty.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry about the confusion.
All right, so who's doing the presentation? This gentleman, please introduce yourself, please. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, city council members, city manager and staff. My name is Michael Chapin. I'm here joining you here. I'm joined here with Barbara Boswell, the executive director for the California Choice Energy Authority. And tonight, we'll share with you, again, our continued discussion on community choice energy here for the city of Baldwin Park. Got it, perfect. Thank you so much. Again, my name is Michael Chapin here from the California Choice Energy Authority. Just a quick highlight here, because I think in our past presentations, we've kind of shared a little bit about what community choice energy is. Just a quick highlight of some of the benefits here that we've shared with some of our members, of how community choice energy will work here with the city of Baldwin Park. And I think some of the big highlights here, I've just kind of nailed it down to a few of them. This is a revenue-supported initiative, it's not a taxpayer-based initiative, so really the savings are really what's going to drive this program, and the city council being at the head of those decisions. There's a lot of initiatives here talking about how the community choice will help the city be able to choose greener, cleaner energy, and reach some of the economic goals that the city might have. I know we even heard here from grid alternatives talking about pollution. Well, the community choice aggregation has been highlighted to be one of the biggest ways a city can actually affect greenhouse gas emissions and improve pollution. This by far, when you look at energy efficiency and some of the renewable programs, community choice outpaces it by a mile. So this is one of the largest programs here. Going down this list, just even on the last one here, provides for energy efficiency and innovative energy programs like energy storage and EV charging stations. I can tell you firsthand, one of the cities that we work with here, the city of Lancaster, has already initiated, as we mentioned here, and I believe we even had the city manager here from Lancaster share with you, they've actually even invested in clean natural gas bus lines for the city of Lancaster, with some of the proceeds from community choice aggregation. So depending on how this city chooses to use some of its savings, again, a lot of it really just provides cheaper energy rates for its constituents. Community choice isn't just in California. Just to kind of give you an idea, it's spread across the US. Right now, it's legal in about seven states, California, New York, Rhode Island, Ohio. Just to share with you, California, obviously, we see it here, it's in our backyard, but it's, it is across, and it's deregulated all the way as far as New York. These are some of the list of operational CCAs that exist today. Just to share with you, the city of Lancaster was the first city in California to operate, and that was in 2015. So if you look at the landscape for CCAs, city of Lancaster, there was one city in Southern California, Edison Territory, that was operating. Today, with the beginning of 2018, that list up there, and there's a few that are not even on that list, there's probably close to 100 between cities and counties. So Sonoma County and all of its cities, we have Santa Clara County, Santa Cruz County, Peninsula Energy Lancaster, Sonoma, all those agencies there and the counties in within are all operating today. So we've got, from 2015, where there was one city, but today, we're talking about 100 different agencies that are operating community choice aggregation today. We do know dozens that are in formation from Los Angeles County, Riverside County, Ventura County, quite a number of agencies that are in exploration and even implementing these programs that are existing today. I created this information here, I think from the last time we spoke, we had maybe just to kind of clarify what the CCA was, and I think maybe there was a slight bit of confusion, so I wanted to share with this with you, is how CCAs are different from utility companies. And on one end are the IOUs, investor-owned utilities. That would be your Southern California Edisons, PG&E. Those are your IOUs. Now, they provide all the, they purchase power from various sources, whether it's hydro plant, coal-fired plant, they'll buy resources all over, they manage the transmission/distribution lines, and they also provide the customer service, the buildings, and the collections. They do all that work under a, basically a monopoly, and those are the IOU. So again, that's the Edison, PG&E, and that's what an IOU does. On the very far end is a municipal public utility, and I guess it's kind of where people get confused, what's a CCA? Are we going to be turning city of Baldwin Park into a municipal utility? That would be something like LEDWP, or the City of Anaheim Public Utility, where they basically operate and run the power lines, distribution. That is a complete municipal utility. That is not what's being talked about today with a CCA. So on the one hand, it's LEDWP, City of Anaheim. That's not what we're proposing for the city of Baldwin Park. It's something in the middle. If you look at that cluster of all the cities that have initiated CCA programs, the two blue bottom items there, the IOU maintains transmission lines, the IOU provides customer service. That means your residents will still get the same bill from the same utility. If a power line goes down, it's the utility that's managing the transmission/distribution lines. So from the consumer's perspective, they'll get the same bill, they'll have the same partnership with Edison, and they'll continue to use Edison, their buildings, and Edison will continue to maintain the transmission/distribution lines. The only one item changed will be, where is the power sourced? And that's where the city of Baldwin Park CCA would come into. City of Baldwin Park would be responsible for scheduling power on behalf of its residents. We can buy cleaner, cheaper power, and I'll show you a quick case study here of another agency that's done that, but simply you would be able to say, we're going to buy power, put it on the grid, and you, Edison, will put it through your transmission lines, and you go ahead and bill your customers the same way you've been doing it, and Edison would remit the funds back to the city of Baldwin Park. So you work in partnership with the IOU. Again, we're not pushing Edison out, we're actually embracing them in. So this is kind of a shared partnership between these agencies. So again, I just wanted to help clarify where a CCA falls into this. Again, we're not taking you to a full utility, we're not making that, and we're not all the way at the other end. We're right in the middle there, where we're just managing one component, which is just your energy generation charge component on behalf of your residences. So this was Sonoma County Clean Power Program, started in 2014. I believe they were the second CCA in California to do this. Just to kind of give you some highlights of how the CCA worked for Sonoma County, I Just to kind of give you some highlights of how the CCA worked for Sonoma County, I think Marin County in 2010, I believe, was the first one, and Lancaster in 2015 being the first city. Sonoma County was the second county in California. With over 200,000 customers, some of the quick highlights here that I find really neat is their standard plan is 33% renewable. What that means is they're sourcing 33% of the energy with renewable energy content. Well, that's a state goal, the state of California is placed on all load-serving entities, that by 2020, 30, you're going to have 33% in, sorry, 2020, 33% in 2030 at 50%. So they've already exceeded 2020 goals right off the bat. They basically said, states put a bar at 33% in 2020, we've already made it today right off the bat. So they're already cleaner and greener than state goals. And 5% below incoming utility, meaning they've dropped rates, generation charges by 5% for all the customers across the board. So right off the bat, they're saying, hey, we've sourced cleaner power, we're at 33%, where we don't have to until 2020, but we're doing so right off the bat at our standard plans. So they're saying, we've decided to build cleaner energy, and we've right off the bat saved 5% to our constituents. So right now they're getting cleaner power at cheaper rates. What it really meant for Sonoma County was, they've also been able to option, is California, the CCAs, the choice in community choice energy, they have a choice whether they want to upgrade or buy renewable power. If solar's not an option for residents or consumers, they can simply opt into a higher rate or option, and this will allow them to actually pay a slight premium and buy more green power, if you will, for their home or business. And Sonoma's case, customer saved $6 million their first year in operation for their CCA. So I just wanted to highlight, this is essentially what CCAs are all about. How do we find cleaner power, more competitive? And a lot of these findings were identified and talked about in the Luskin Study. That brings us to something else we talked about in some of our past meetings. Can we get a third-party report? Can we see something else that talks about the different options available to cities that will help us navigate whether or not a CCA is good for the city of Baldwin Park? I took this table here, which is, it really does, I don't know if you can see that from where you're at, but I'll try to read it for you. This is a study that came from the UCLA Luskin Center. It identified and talked about three different agencies available for the city of Santa Monica, and it used Santa Monica as a test case here. The three CCAs available for the city of Santa Monica were LACE, which is LA County's Community Choice Energy Program. The second, it says SBCP, which is South Bay Clean Power, I think that was one that we talked about or mentioned as well, and then CCEA, which is California Choice Energy Authority. Of those three programs, South Bay Clean Power was mentioned as it's more of a, not an option-ready, available, but it's more of a portfolio of what it could look like, but it wasn't really a ready-to-go option for the city of Santa Monica, and it really kneeled it down to just LACE and CCA. And this table here, just without going to the details, it really defines the difference between going with LACE, which is a JPA program, where if the city of Baldwin Park wanted to join LA County's program, you would have one vote. And by default, again, this is their report of the difference of the programs, but when it goes over to California Choice Energy Authority, it does talk about rate-setting, programs, power content, and default product. This would all be at the city council level. These would be decisions the city council would then put on if we wanted to save our consumers 5%, 6%, our energy content at 33%, 50%. These are decisions the city council can make in analyzing the city of Baldwin Park's decisions. As a JPA, you would not have that ability. And I do know that LA County's program, I think it's actually reaching even beyond LA County's program, so it definitely would be one member of a JPA that is definitely far-reaching, even beyond some of the LA County reaches. So I wanted to share with you, this is that we've provided the Luskin Study, I think the staff already had it, but they've been very diligent about being resourceful and finding more information. We've been able to share the Luskin Study report, and again, just kind of identifying some of the key differences, but I know that we've shared that before with you, but now you're able to see it from a third party as, here are the differences, and these are the benefits of maybe a CCA program versus LACE or anything else as well. What you have for you today is the ability for the city of Baldwin Park to quantify the value of a CCA. So what's being talked about today and the items on the agenda today are allowing for the city of Baldwin Park to request load data energy from SCE, allow us to do the load forecasting and rate analysis, perform a development, just allow us to actually put together the numbers to show you, this is what it looks like if your CCA was to move forward. Preparation of all your formation ordinances, and prepare the implementation plan for the city of Baldwin Park. This doesn't obligate the city to do anything in terms of risk. So this doesn't obligate you to form a CCA, this doesn't make you a decision to join CCEA even, you could decide to develop and build this all on your own with in-house staff if you really chose to do so. All this does is it puts the tools to quantify what the value of a CCA means to the city of Baldwin Park, and if it's worth going that extra step. This rate study analysis is going to be done, and again, provided working with staff to see what this can do for you. And again, for what we've seen, there haven't been any cities or lack of cities that haven't looked at this and moved forward. And again, just to kind of share with you, from 2015, from last semester being the only city, to where we're at the end of 2017, we had over 100 agencies, and over double that over next year looking to implement CCA programs. So it's definitely one, I think, cities and counties are definitely embracing as a ways to take control of the energy costs and really push those savings on to its residents and businesses. So again, that's what's before you today, it's simply to quantify the value of the CCA that's been discussed with staff and available to the city of Baldwin Park. I'll myself and Barbara Boswell here from the California Choice Energy Authority are available for any questions you might have. Thank you again for giving us this time.
Mayor?
Thank you.
If I may, I would be in favor in moving forward with this feasibility study, it doesn't commit us to anything, but I think we're at a point where, crossroads where, we could start to look at it, at least examine it, to see what the feasibility study is. I think last time we were waiting for a UCLA report, and that report is in the staff report, I just, you know, I just kind of like to move forward and take a look at kind of seeing what we can do. At the same time, we can still have, as they're doing their feasibility study, we can still have Edison come and give their comments at the next meeting, but how long would a feasibility study take to do?
A lot of that time really depends on how long it takes to get the energy load data from SCE. We've seen that time really take anywhere from six weeks just to obtain some of that data. Our timeframe for going through the entire report, Barbara, about three to four months for us to be able to deliver that final report with all the findings in there. So a complete three or four months, and again, that, most of that delay is, how long will it take us to get your data?
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mayor? I would like to, I look at the, and I'm not saying that this isn't a wonderful program, but I look at the $63,000 that we'll be spending for this feasibility study, and I would really like for Edison to first give us a presentation. I know that we've done this before with other entities that have come here, and I remember that Councilmember Garcia has asked for someone else to come forward and give a presentation in all fairness, and I think that we should take a look at Edison's presentation before we can move forward. Like I said, I see the $63,000, I know that that probably doesn't seem like a lot, because it is a feasibility study that might help our residents, however, I do see it as someone's salary, so I would really like to wait until we see the Edison presentation.
Mayor, I would just like to, you know, it's an investment, yes, it is $63,000, but for the return that we can get back, when you look at other cities like Lancaster and some of the other cities that are already doing it, I just think it's an option that we should look at, because, you know, we are a city that needs revenue, and I think it's something we can move forward with, and at the same time, listen to Edison and get their point of view. Thank you.
Yes, Vice Mayor, at this point, Susan Rubio.
Well, I do have a concern, and I know it sounds like it's 64, I think that's what it says here, but there's other factors. I mean, unless you're going to be doing all the work, we have to consider staff time, and there's a lot of time that goes into this. And the reason I have concerns is that earlier we had a closed session, and, you know, it was discussed just, you know, how overloaded our staff is, in particular in certain areas, and I can't imagine, you know, putting this on top of them right now, and so I think we can wait, there's no rush, if it's effective, if we can move forward with it once we have all the information. And I would like to talk to staff in particular to see what that would look like on their end, how many hours of time, I know you're going to need ordinance, information, and a lot of documentation, unless you're going to provide secretaries, I think we need to also be mindful of what the workload is going to look like on our end. So I'm not opposed to it either, I think it's a great idea, but I say there's no rush, and I would love to discuss it with their staff to see what that's going to look like, because if it's a lot of time, I know our finance director was sharing that, right now they have a lot of workload, because we just had our bargaining units, you know, negotiated, and they're having to redo a lot of work, and this is going to fall on their laps, so I would rather wait. Let's make sure they're done with the MOUs and the workload that they have, that it's not always this overloaded, but right now in particular because of negotiations, they have a lot of work to do. So I would also opt to wait a little, make sure we get the other presentation, and then speak to our CEO and see what that's going to look like on our end. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, let me, I have a question. How does, how did Pico Rivera do that? How were they paid back? In other words, that'll cost us $63,000, so I think we could recoup that.
Absolutely, so definitely the, the $60,000 was paid by Pico Rivera, their program is up and live and running today, so their program is live today. The $60,000 was paid and is basically being repaid from the proceeds of the program. So they've actually built in to get themselves repaid through the start of the program, and that's initially how it penciled out for Pico Rivera, and their program is up and running today.
All right. Anyone else have any other questions? No? Okay, so at this point, all right.
Well, Mayor, what I would like to suggest then is, well, let me just do this first. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to move approval for the feasibility study.
Okay, there's a motion on the table to move approval for, to start the actual program itself. Am I correct? The study?
Just do the study.
The study, okay, well, I'll go in second, but just a study, it's not going to hurt anyways.
But $64,000 and staff time.
That money will, that money will be recuperated, am I correct?
If we go with them.
Correct, once your program is started, the revenues from the program will repay your funds.
Okay. Well, how long before staff would come back with detailed information, how long would that take?
For the, for the study that they're talking about? Maybe, Michael, you can clarify how much staff time would be involved if we proceeded with the study?
Sure, if I can, well, I would ask Barbara Boswell, she's actually been, spearhead here on helping, even particularly with Pico Rivera, so let me ask Barbara Boswell, the executive director for California Choice Energy Authority.
Thank you, Mayor and city council. For the purposes of preparation of the study, there actually isn't really much in the way of staff time involved. The consultants who do the work, we reach out to Southern California Edison on behalf of the city, receive the load data, do all of the technical analysis, and then return with the results to the city and share those results with you. So there is really no, at this point, burden or extra work for staff. It's all done through the contracts.
At what point will you be using our staff?
Should the city decide to move forward, we do need to utilize the staff to provide input and to come to the council in determining, setting some policies. Much of the work through CCEA is done through a contractual relationship to minimize the burden on the city council, or the city, which is the direction that Pico Rivera went when they set up their program, so that it was as minimal as possible impact on staff.
I would still like to bring it back, $63,000, and we're taking a gamble here, we don't even know if we're going ahead with that.
Okay, no, let me just, well, we didn't vote on it, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll take my motion off the table.
Okay, he's going to drop it, Councilmember.
And I would suggest that we bring it back, bring both, this proposal back on the next agenda, and have Edison's presentation at the same time.
All right.
In March.
Well, not March, just the next council meeting.
No, there's a council meeting on the 21st. February, this is the 7th.
No, we have one on the 21st.
So they can come back on the 21st?
In March, we've got to be fair and give Edison or whoever it is to get their staff together to give a presentation.
Well, he can come, I don't know, can he come back in February?
I would like for it to be in March.
All right, okay, that's fine, can you do the first meeting in March?
That's fine.
All right, all right. All right, that's fine. All right, thank you very much, appreciate that.
Capacity.
All right, so at this point, we're going to go ahead and move over to the consideration study.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, so at this point, we'll go over to the request I have, which is the direction to staff to begin the RFP process for the city toll franchise. So what I want to do is the current ordinance that we have, I want to make sure that we update that and remove the actual, allow the city council to determine the amount of years. Currently, it's four years, so I'd like to remove that and allow the council to have, to decide that upon reviewing. Secondly, also, of course, some of the cost factors, times have changed from what we've allowed them to charge, so we'll review that. I guess, I guess, go over to the PD, am I correct, to the police chief for review, and bring this back. So I'd like to see this back on the agenda.
Is that in the form of a motion?
Yeah, well, yeah, I'll make a motion, I'll make a, hold on. At this point, I'd like to also make sure that we bring this back, at least the second meeting in March, for a possible decision to be made by the city council.
Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question. I need clarification as to, as to what exactly are you changing on the contract and the RFP? The changes will be on the RFP that's going out?
That is correct, that is correct. So what we basically will remove, in other words, allow the city council to decide the number of years. Currently, the ordinance reads that's four years.
Okay.
So I would like that to be removed, and that that decision be made by the city council at such time.
So that means that the contract can be terminated at any time depending on the council majority?
Well, you know what, part of the democratic process.
No, I'm just asking.
Well, that, that.
For clarification.
Sure, that could be a possibility.
Okay. Just for clarification, I need to, I need to organize that on my own thoughts here, so.
Absolutely. Of course, obviously, we do have a toll company that's been part of the city of Baldwin Park since 1973, they've done a phenomenal, phenomenal job, and literally have invested hundreds of not, maybe, maybe even about a million dollars since that time they've been here to the community, and literally hundreds of thousands of residents have benefited immensely. So the legal council, we could take that back, and I would like this to be placed on the agenda for the second meeting in March.
And Mayor?
Just review, yes.
I know you did say that you want the fees to be reviewed and so forth, please, I would like, I would very much like the fees and see if there's some possibility that upon the event that it's a low-income family, that there might be some type of a discount or something for, if they can prove that it is a low-income family. I understand that lots of times they're being towed for a good reason, but I would also like that possibility to be available to our residents.
Which obviously is the percentage, as well, the percentage that they currently pay to the city, so then we may have to look at that as well, as possible changes, because times have changed, and I know that it's not probably as lucrative as it was at one time. So we have the direction, so I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Second.
Second, any objections? So we'll see this back the second week of March, the second meeting in March. All right, so at this point, we'll go over to requests by Mayor Potem Pacheco for discussion and consideration, a report of the following regarding police uncollected funds, booking fees, DUIs, cost recoveries, false alarms, et cetera, and future processing procedures and implementation. Councilmember, Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco, sorry about that.
Thank you, Mayor. In my discussions with the POA, one of the issues that they brought out was to look at different ways of funding, and they came up with the list that I have there on the agenda, so I just wanted to direct staff to look at those areas and see, you know, what the status is on those, if we're doing any, if not, if we could look at implementing those types of collection processes and bring back a report to the council in a month? I mean, is that enough time to look at those collection processes?
We've actually, yeah, we've actually been looking at these issues and meeting with the police department and the finance department, and Rose actually is in the process of doing an RFP to get a consultant to look at collections of these fees, and we'll have that before you at the next meeting or two.
Got to press the button, Rose.
I talk loud. I already sent out the, about six, last night, so I should get the process back on the next one. One, I would be.
What I'd like to have is if we can get a status report on, you know, where you're at, at this current process and what you're doing, and second, compare either we send it out or have, if staff could do it also, you know, look at both sides and see if that's doable. That's my request, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Ricardo Pacheco.
May I add to that? And, I mean, it's important, because we know there's a lot of outstanding fees, but I but I would also suggest that we, if possibly, hire someone part-time to do collections, and because, once again, you know, we're talking earlier about how we only have one person in the office, and they're having to do so many things, and that's why I think sometimes things are not effective, and we don't collect as many fees as we should, and I would recommend that we have at least a part-time. I don't know what the title could be, but, you know, collections, accounts receivables and payable, so they can help out a little bit in that area, and we can be more successful. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Cruz Baca, and I will agree
Go back with Susan.
Oh, sorry about that, Councilmember Cruz, Susan Rubio. And I agree with Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco's request here, and the input also by Councilmember Susan Rubio. Of course, we're going to be tightening up on a lot of stuff, because we were discussing closed session over some of the increases that we'll have for our staff, but at the same time, hopefully it's revenue that will maybe at least make a little, a little pinch in that particular area. All right, thank you. So at this point, we're going to go ahead and move on to the next one. Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco, rules of decorum outlined in the Baldwin Park minutes, oh, yeah, it's right here. Okay, you want to skip that? Yes, yes, we did, sorry about that, okay. Then, Councilmember Cruz Baca, discussion and consideration at this point, Councilmember Cruz Baca.
Yes, I would like to, I would like to ask staff that now that we're going through Phase 3 of Walnut Creek Nature Park, I think it would be a wonderful gesture to open up a memorial walkway where we could designate, be careful, either rocks or plaques that can't be stolen or removed, of course, or defaced, to recognize those who have passed before the age of 21. And the first names that I would like to include are Aramaz, Piki, Andresian, and Anna. And her mother's still a resident of Baldwin Park, but Anna grew up here in Baldwin Park, she came to speak to us. And of course, Mr. Rios' grandson that passed away recently, Jordan Rios Macias. And anyone else that would like to come forward, those are just a couple of names that I thought of, but I'm sure that there's other, other children, I call them, that passed before the age of 21. And I would really appreciate that.
Absolutely, thank you very much, Councilmember. All right, so at this point, anything else on the agenda there?
I would like to, I've got, remember, direct staff to start planning for the street fair.
Oh, yeah, that's right, okay, cool.
And that's what I would like for, to start, let's get it going here, it's going to be bigger and better.
Okay, all right, so at this point, I'd like to move for German of the city council, that's my motion.
Second.
Any objections? See none, so move. All right, so at this point, I'd like to open up the Charitable Relief Foundation. So at this point, we'll go over to items, we actually, new business, which is approval of minutes of the Baldwin Park Charitable Relief Foundation, of second, Baldwin Park's Charitable Relief Foundation Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year ended in, excuse me, June 30th. So that is my motion.
Second.
Any objections? See none, so move. This point, I'd like to make a motion for German.
Mayor, I would, I would like to, and I know that we've already motioned, but I would like to include a business owner to be a part of that committee. I think that that would be, I mean, we could decide who it would be, but I would also like to include a business owner for that committee.
Absolutely, okay. Oh, we'll have to bring that back?
Yeah, we'll have that on the next
All right, make a motion, make a motion, and I'll second.
I make a motion that we include a business owner as part of the committee, and bring it back to the next council meeting.
Very good, thank you very much, Councilmember Cruz Baca. All right, so at this point, I will go ahead and move for German.
Second.
Any objections? See none, so move. This evening, leave at Baldwin Park.
We were going to have the
Yes, we're going to go back.
Yes.
Yeah, closed session is still open, so let's go on back. All right, thank you.
I'm sorry, guys, I got a little
Good night.
I don't want to be in there so long, either. Excellent, thank you very much. Dave, thanks for being here.
Oh, sure.
David's my mentor, as we know, because of, what's his name, remember what's his name that was here? Carl Yates.
Carl Yates.
If it wasn't for you, that wouldn't have happened, I'm sure.
You would still be here.
I didn't, yeah.
Hi, welcome.
Mr. Garcia, hello here. I didn't want to be rude to you.
No, no, I saw you. Oh, yeah, yeah, thank you, I saw the announcement. Oh, that's great, I'm glad to hear that. Oh, that's good, yeah. It's true, this is a community back in the eighties.
I have a question. Victor. As our mayor. There have been a number of women since, yeah, growing up here. I have a question for you, my expert. Are you going to turn it on? I have something to ask you. Yeah, I No, I like her.